Call meeting to order.
Councilmember Scrivener?
Here.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Here.
Councilmember Public Court?
Here.
Mayor Potem Davies? And Mayor Smith?
Here.
We have the Hudson, Mayor Potem Davies, and we have Councilmember Public Court, yes.
Would you please stand for an invocation? Pastor Mark Dixler, Church of Christ. Good evening. Thank you for coming here.
Our Father, we are thankful for this time that we can come together and we can consider what we may do to serve the needs of this community best. We pray, Father, that as this meeting progresses, that all will have only that in mind and not selfish concerns that guide any kind of animosity toward each other. We are thankful, Father, for bringing us this far through the pandemic. And we just pray that you will keep us safe again from some of the developments and that you will also prevent any panic that might lead to unwise and harmful decisions, especially for our children. We thank you, Father, for all the opportunities that we have to serve and to love others. And we pray that that will be the guiding passion in our lives. So we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Christian, would you please send a pledge?
Happily. Please place your hand over your heart and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is our consent agenda. All those items are listed with an asterisk. Consider it non-controversial by staff. Do you take it with one rule call vote? Is there anyone in the audience who would like to see something from Consent Agenda removed for separate discussion? Anyone on the council? Do I have motion to approve Consent Agenda? Best present. One second. Rule call vote, please.
Councilmember Scrivener?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Public Court?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote to approve the Consent Agenda.
Thank you. The next item is Audience Oral and Written Invitations. Do we have anything that was presented in writing for the council? Anyone in the audience who would care to bring something before the council that's not on the agenda tonight?
This is Alan Lee with Federation of Public Service Employees.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Let me do that again. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I am Alan Lee with Federation of Public Service Employees. I come as one. I stand as many. I wanted to talk a little bit about the employees in the city of Tashkee. I've had occasion to represent them for many years and know the work that they do. To let you be clear, I did not come to downress upgrades for land baths, any of the city staff. I come to speak truth to power and take common sense to high places. And understand, like you, I served on transportation authority board. Like you, I'm elected official. I serve on fire authority board. And like you, I serve on city council. So I know what it's like to sit in those spares and have that noise. And I know what it's like to get reports from our staff and our bureaucrats. But I also know what it's like to work in a ditch, to get our water clean and delivered, keep our roads smooth, keep our street signal lights going, keep our toilets flush. Our employees often so good, we don't even think about it. We just take for granted all the infrastructure that they deliver. You know, I appreciate the words of clergy in this invitation, talking about thinking wisely and being led with a loving heart. I really appreciate your slogan, "In God We Trust." And I'm reminded by scripture that whatever we do to the least of thee, we do unto thee. The least of thee are those blue collar workers that we sometimes take for granted. They're not disgruntled. They love their city. Most of them live here. They work hard and play by the rules, pay the laws, pay the taxes, go to church on Sunday and back to work on Monday. They are part of the city. And I have to tell you, they don't feel the recitation of that. They know that you honor and respect our law enforcement as you should, our police officers as you should. I represent a lot of those as well. But we think we are neglecting our workers. And I'm not going to get into the details of the contract disputes. Let's just say they're wired. Let's just say that the feedback we get is just the direction of the council. And I refuse to believe that this council is aware of the intricacies of negotiations and has given staff that direction. So hopefully in the near future, we will find an opportunity to talk with the specificity about the things that it separates from. And I refuse to believe that you will treat your employees in that way. In fact, I know you don't. And in fact, I know people like to create the narrative of us versus them, an outside parachuting. Please consider the possibility that there's something we can do better as it relates to our employees and how we treat them. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, thank you for the opportunity, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Anyone else who would like to bring something before the council that's not on the agenda tonight? Item number four is Dispersment, Spells, and Claims for RSI Patrolmen. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to raise a question on this item? Anyone on the council? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Rule call vote, please.
Councilmember Scrivener?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Public Court?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote to approve the RSI dispersments.
Thank you. Item number seven, First Reading and Introduction of An Ordinance Replacing Article 7 and Modifying Section 11.10, 030 of the City of Tashkee zoning code.
All right. Thank you. Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, I apologize ahead of time. I didn't care my voice for a while tonight. I've got a number of items. The first for you is a new sign code, basically, under ours and mine. So I do have a presentation briefly. I'll walk you through that and we can take any questions. But I do, did we open hearing technically? This is a public hearing, correct, Dorian? This is a public hearing, correct?
It's an ordinance reading.
Okay. So do we need to open a public hearing before I give my present? Okay. Sorry. Again, the procedures for planning commission and city council makes up sometimes. So my apologies. Okay. So let's go ahead. Okay. So briefly, as it relates to the sign code update, I have this presentation for you. We'll discuss why we're updating the sign code, an overview of the amendments, and then we have time at the end for me to try to answer your questions and discuss anything you'd like. So first, the purpose of the sign code. Back in 2015, the United States Supreme Court issued a landmark decision entitled Reed versus the town of Gilbert. That's Gilbert in Arizona. There was a legal case regarding temporary directional signs relating to a qualifying event. What that means in layman terms is temporary signs pointing to an activity that a church actually wanted to do. And the town of Gilbert had regulations in place that said that temporary signs of that nature were not allowed to be up for as long as the church wanted it up for. And it ultimately made it all the way to the Supreme Court, in which the Supreme Court ruled in favor of Reed and argued that you may not regulate signs based on the nature of their content. They must be content neutral. It's the First Amendment protection. And so it's not that you can't regulate signs at all, but you can't regulate them based on what they say. And since in that case, the sign was saying, "Come to our church thickening on Sunday," and the town of Gilbert had made a decision that those types of signs could not be up for too long a period of time, therefore, that's how this led to this moment in front of the Supreme Court. So the purpose of the sign code update is our sign code was originally written in 2014 with a brand-new zoning code and has a few areas in the sign code in which they're not complying with Reed or its question as to whether or not they're complying with Reed. So we've been planning for a couple of years in the planning department to update the sign code, and we got busy, took care of it, took it with the planning commission last meeting. So I'm here tonight to introduce the ordinance to change the sign code to you and explain it. So a couple of examples of content neutral. Content-based regulation asks questions like, "What does the sign say?" or "The message determine if..." The message itself determines if the sign is up or down or applicable regulation. So example of something in our own code that is content-based is a realtor sign. Our code regulates how long a realtor can have a for-sale sign out in front of a house. So that's content-based regulation. Content-neutral regulation states that you can only look at things like time, place, and manner. Those are good examples. So you can see the little pictures there, the blue signs. Vote for Waldo as an example of content-based regulation. But if we regulate the size of the sign or the nature of the sign, we can still regulate how long it is up for, but we just can't regulate it based on what it says. So you can see the pictures are examples of signs with content shown, and above them are examples of depictions of signs that are content neutral. Does that make sense? So we define, for instance, the political sign as a guard sign type 1, and that's how we make it content neutral. So hopefully that explanation makes some sense. So here are the updates and amendments that we identified. Working, by the way, we worked with Lisa Wise Consulting who wrote our zoning code to prepare this updating. This is actually their presentation. You see their logo there. They were really great to work with and are experts in this field. Updating any standards conflicted with Reed. Focus on provisions that address content-based sign issues. We did want to update temporary sign types. One of the items that we, for instance, took out is we are no longer going to require permits for nearly as many temporary signs as we did before. The regulations still exist, but we're not going to require you to get a permit from us to exercise your right under that code. So trying to simplify some of the things we do, make them practical. Minor text edits. And then we also did update the discussion of billboards in the downtown chapter. The previous sign code did arguably move towards eliminating billboards in the downtown area, but we went step farther and tried to make it clearer in this code update. We can talk about that more in a later. So an overview of the amendments. The sign code is currently split into these two primary categories: downtown signs and signs outside of downtown. And there's a lot of duplication between these standards because the previous version was purely based on geography. And so we changed it to this, which is now where we have sections general to all places in town, general sign regulations. And then we have smaller sections pointing to downtowns and outside of downtown. And then, of course, we have definitions in the back of them. So briefly, changes to the general scope. Just highlighting for you some of the changes. Again, new chapter to consolidate general standards applying to both downtown and citywide. Updating Article 7 for content neutral. We are required, by the way, to add a provision about a place to pick it. You can pick it in front of city hall. There's any other law you have to have a place where somebody can have a peaceful demonstration. Updated substitutions, interpretations. We've reduced the signs that are exempt. We consolidated and updated various restrictions. We did expand significantly on the elimination standards because we're seeing a lot more self-led signs, being like message board signs. And we wanted to make sure we were in front of those, that we didn't have really blinking bright lights that really don't fit in with our kind of sleepy town that falls asleep at nine o'clock most nights, you know? So we updated those to deal with the way topics are currently discussed in the industry. Updated non-conforming signs. And we did add a separability section, which is just a best practice recommended by Lisa Wise, meaning that if, for some reason, one section of the code got challenged in court and we lost, it wouldn't invalidate the entire code. It would only validate the one section that we lost the challenge on. Thankfully, so far, we've never been challenged on a sign in court. I hope to go my whole career never to that. Chapter 720 on downtown signs. We did update window sign area calculations. This was actually in both sections. We ran into an issue where we were judging what's in the windows of buildings separate from the signs that are fixed on a building, to the point where we had a few cases where we had business owners who were utilizing both provisions to their fullest and thus would have a very sign-dizzy building. And so one of the simple edits we made is we do have chapters in sign code that talk about maximum amount of square footage of signage for a building, and we simply combined them together and said, "Look, you can have as many window signs or building signs as you want, as long as together they're not more than this much square footage in the front of your building." So trying to get control of that minor issue. Again, we updated temporary sign standards, added extensive provisions for temporary signs, clarifying exactly what is defined as temporary and permanent. And we added tables that help an applicant cross-reference and thus a staff cross-reference. Okay, this is how many signs you can have on the building. This is how many signs you have in the windows. How many signs you can put in the yard, and corresponding them so that we're not getting situations where we have just a sign overload. Hope that makes sense. But in general, we didn't reduce the amount of signs, other than this window item that people are allowed to have over the current code now. We didn't make any changes down there. In fact, in many cases, by creating this table, we clarified an upward trend in the amount of signage. So outside of downtown, a few changes to the agricultural signs. Again, window sign issue got updated. A lot of changes to the temporary signs. And yeah, added tables for maximizing standards on temporary signs. So this is an example of a table that you'll find in the code now. I'm not expecting anyone to read that from here. But it clarifies, on the left-hand column, it's like types of signs that are defined in the code. You know, a type 1 yard sign, a type 2 yard sign, et cetera. And then, based upon zone, it then tells you what the maximum allowable square footage of that type of sign is. And those can be combined in any way that the property owner would like to combine them. And so these tables are designed to cross-reference and allow us to easily determine whether somebody's got too much or the wrong signage. And it's easy for the applicant to understand, "Okay, yeah, I can put this type of yard sign up or this type of yard sign up." Hopefully, it helps us keep it clear. So that's it. That's the end of the presentation that I have for you. I'll just highlight briefly the billboard section that I mentioned earlier. Our initial code from 2014 states that for any non-compliant signs within the downtown area, which, by the way, the downtown is Mill Street to Hayes, and then north and south is A Street to C Street. So we're in the downtown now. Under that definition of the downtown, we have a provision in the 2014 code that says any sign in this downtown area that is not right, not in compliance with the code, has five years to become right, or at the end of the fifth year, if you're good in your math, it's 2019, then it automatically moves into the category from being legal to being illegal as a product of that. That arguably affected, there's two or three billboards in the downtown area, arguably affected those. We've been talking to Lamar, who owns a number of those billboards along Tashkee Boulevard, and they're not real eager to take those signs down. So in this sign code, we did clearly clarify a desire for those billboards to expire within six months at the end of this code. The billboards are a legacy to Highway 58 having been to Tashkee Boulevard. Those signs, we would never allow a new billboard anywhere in town. The only place where they're allowed within city limits is when they are immediately adjacent to Highway 58, where there are several signs now, and they continue to remain legal. But for obvious reasons, we're interested, or staff believes, that we should be interested in moving away from allowing billboards in the downtown. So we clarified that provision in even clearer language in this update. We don't have any plans to act against those signs, you know, 30 days after this code being, but, you know, but staff would like to have that provision in the code so that when the time is appropriate, we can go to Lamar or whoever owns the billboards at that time and exercise our rights to see those signs staying down. So that concludes my presentation. Let me briefly give my staff report and give you a recommendation. So again, we are replacing Article 7 and modifying Section 11 of the Tashkee zoning code. And so tonight, I recommend that you introduce an ordinance to the city council, the city of Tashkee, replacing Article 7 and Section 11.10, 030 of the city zoning code regulating signs. That concludes my staff report. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Jake. Anyone in the audience who would like to ask a question? Any member of the council? I've signed ordinance changes over the years, I know, and they keep getting more and more refined where it's somewhat easier to, because we're not just redoing it, you know, starting from scratch. It's a good day a while back, and it was really tough.
2014 was a big change. 2014 was a big change. And then since then, yeah, we have refined it based on things we run into in the real world, like sign walkers, people that are carrying signs and controlling when and where those are at, or signs that are on sidewalks to make sure they don't become dripping hazards or things like that. This one, Reed started back in 2015, like I said. And then what happened is, you know, there was sort of collective movement in the industry to figure out what Reed meant over the last several years. So that's why we budgeted to take care of this update, this code, and that's why you're scheduled tonight.
Thank you. With no further discussion, do I have a motion?
Go ahead, Liz.
We have a motion. Second, as previously read by title only, to introduce the ordinance. As read, rule call vote, please.
Councilmember Scrivener?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Public Court?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote to approve the First Reading and Introduction of An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Tashkee, replacing Article 7 and modifying Section 11.10 and 030 of the City of Tashkee zoning regulation, regulating signs.
Thank you. Item number eight.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. The next item I have for you is a public hearing relating to zoning code amendment number 202101 for Tashkee Unified School District Conditional Use Permit 202101 and Architectural Design Site Plan Review 202106 for AT&amp;T Mobility. So should we be opening a public hearing?
It's just an introduction and every other ordinance.
Very good. I'm sorry. I just, I see the words there. I want to make sure I'm getting mine. Okay. So tonight, let me please clarify what's happened today so that you all know what I'm asking for. So Planning Commission heard this issue on August 9. They normally would be the agency that would determine the appropriateness of a conditional use permit, CUP, and an architectural design site plan review. You all are, unless somebody, of course, appeals that decision to you all. However, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation on zoning code change, or zoning changes. In this case, it's a physical zone change for a piece of property. And so our code reads that in these cases in which there is a mixture of items going together, then the highest regulatory authority, you guys, Planning Commission and me, takes the decision. So I would encourage you, Planning Commission fully vetted and went through the CUP and the architectural design review, as well as some change they are recommending that you approve what I'm presenting tonight. But I'm going to focus tonight on the zone change component because that's the piece principally for you guys. Happy to answer any questions over on the project that you have. We did have a public hearing at the Planning Commission regarding this cell tower project. So AT&amp;T Mobility submitted a request for approval of a 65-foot-tall unmanned television communication facility, also known as a cell tower. And they're proposing a monopole with 12 panel antennas and 36 remote radio units associated with the project, including an onsite diesel generator that will be utilized for power outages, which we have from time to time. Anyway, the proposed location is installed on unpaved vacant land owned by the Tashkee Unified School District. It happens to be their maintenance yard that's on Valley Boulevard immediately west of the Tashkee High School. The school district owns a significant 20-acre parcel. You can see there from the depicted photo, the little yellow square is the area where the cell tower would go. The school district owns the entire 20-acre parcel, which I think we might have a sketch elsewhere in there for it, but it's a much bigger, there it is, yeah, much bigger piece of property. So the proposal tonight is, A, to rezone the property, the whole 20 acres, and then, B, to approve the CUP and architectural review of the project for AT&amp;T. Okay? So that's the project. The lease is between AT&amp;T and Tashkee Unified School District. The city's only role here is approval of the project. So as I mentioned before, it's a 65-foot monopole, a monopole pole. So that is, there you can see the depiction. That's a faux pine pole. The applicant first brought us a eucalyptus, and we thought, "Well, we don't see many of those around." We thought this would be a better item. We do have pines naturally that occur up here, so this one felt like a better fit other than a pole. I mean, some people debate that it's better off as just a pole and just let it be what it is. I've seen flagpoles turn into them. I've seen all kinds of stuff. We actually debated with the applicant different options for this and felt like this was honestly the best bid for the community. The one thing that we did ask for and receive from the applicant was the commitment to add five significant live trees to the site. So that's what's depicted here is, and forgive me, I'll get the species. It's a fairly large conifer similar to the pine to be planted in that area. There are several conditions of approval associated with establishing proper irrigation and maintenance of those pines, the goal being that 10, 15 years from now to a casual pass by, it'll kind of look like an actual grown tree. I promise that you'll never see it again, but hopefully it won't be a nice one. That's the little, we're trying to shield it from you. And we'll say that AT&amp;T service, anecdotally, here has been struggling in the Tashkee area for a long time, and it's a service really needed by our residents. And that certainly was motivating staff when we were preparing this application and feeling like this was a good chance to help deal with that. All right. So the zoning code amendment, again, the Tashkee zoning code, this was a unique problem that we have. The land is currently zoned RSP, which is, I use the acronym so often I forgot what it is. Yeah, it's like recreational school public, I think is what it is. Is that's not right? Recreation, school, public? It's a zoning designation that we've only applied to a few places here in town, and it was applied entirely to properties already developed. And so as such, and it is, it's pretty much all just the schools here in town that have their own designation. And as a result of it being so limited in its use, we didn't spend the money back in 2014 generating the zoning data on RSP, the zoning code tables and all the different regulations that would apply, because we have tables for every single zone, right? Lots of details. And we just didn't foresee a situation in which we needed RSP to be detailed, because we didn't expect the Tashkee High School, never be anything other than the Tashkee High School. And so we were faced with a challenge when this issue came up of, do we write the zoning for RSP to allow telecommunications, or do we work with the applicant and the landowner, in this case, the school district, to change the zone to something that's acceptable that then allow the telecommunications? So we opted for the latter option. Staff identified T4.5, which is a zone that allows the school's maintenance yard. It does allow the school to continue to use that property for school purposes. The school district is informing they have a long-term goal to move their bus operations to this property. You know, so they have plans for the property, and they can continue to do that. The T4.5 also opens the door to telecommunications as well as to other options. And this table helps highlight for you, T4.5, by the way, is a dark pink color. Sorry, it's a different name. Anyway, dark pink. And so it is adjacent to areas that are already zoned T4.5, and adjacent to areas is zoned T4, so they're good neighbors to each other. So this makes sense from a zoning perspective to do this. So that's it. That's the project. The CUP then is a conditional use permit, so there's a whole list of the conditions of approval associated with the construction of the cell tower. And I discussed briefly with you the architectural issues, mainly the disguise of the pole, et cetera. So with that, my recommendation is that you introduce an ordinance of the city of Tashkee amending the Tashkee regulating plan and finding the ordinance to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And I recommend you adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Tashkee approving the conditional use permit number 202101 and Architectural Design Site Plan Review number 202101. AT&amp;T Mobility subject to be attached to this condition of approval. And I do think, I see so. And I do think, I see Stella here, yes, Stella is with AT&amp;T Mobility or with a company that aids them in getting this approval, so she's here in case you have questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the public?
Um, I, oh my God. Um, this is wanting to prove the service of AT&amp;T to existing areas, and how far does that go? You know, I'm kind of concerned because I, I feel like their services got down a little bit in that pattern.
And may I answer that question?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, councilmember Republican Court, yes, excellent question. Let me find for you.
Here it is, Jay.
Here it is, yeah, page five, yeah, I'm looking at the same thing. So, um, councilmember Republican Court, are you looking at a PDF version of the staff report or a paper copy?
I have a paper copy, nothing.
Okay. So attachment A of my staff report includes the staff report that I provided to the planning commission.
Right.
So if you go to page five of that document?
Okay, I'm there.
There should be a pretty color-coded map.
Right.
Okay, so the first map is on page five. The bottom of page five is a coverage map of AT&amp;T's service now to our area. Purple is bad.
Yeah, I agree with it.
So, so purple indicates areas where their coverage is not good. So if you go to, if you go to the next page, figure six is their engineering assessment of the change in coverage that you can expect with this tower. So, green is good.
Yeah.
So you can see that there's a significant improvement to the coverage for AT&amp;T customers within city limits as a result of this tower.
Okay, that's how, that answered my question. I have another one also. Um, how is that going to affect the Sage Ranch development and also, um, high school is, you know, right there, you have this, the football field there, how is that going to affect school and the Sage Ranch project as well?
Excellent.
It should improve, I think, if it applies.
Yes, the service to Sage Ranch and to the high school and to the school district in general will go way up. And I would also reassure anyone concerned about cell tower proximity that we worked with the applicant to position the tower along the site in a manner that kept it away from where children will migrate or away from where the, the neighborhood Sage Ranch, which is located immediately to the west of this location, would be. So this is hundreds of yards from the nearest potential home, and, and at least a hundred yards from any kid running on the track. So we, the applicant was very good to work with us about, hey, let's kind of move this off on the corners towards the middle of this vacant property. So, yeah, the coverage is going to be great for the school district, and we also consider the site location from safety perspectives as well.
Well, I, I could see kids trying to hit the tree with a football or soccer ball or something, I think it's a way to get after that tree.
The applicant is here and heard you, councilmember Republican Court, I'm sure they'll, they'll keep an eye on that. But you're probably right.
I, I know kids, and I'll think of something, they got up there and caused some issues. So anyway, they're pretty in it.
Any other questions from the council? All right. For the representative of AT&amp;T, we certainly look forward, would you like to come forward, give us a timeline so we can expect this probably within three weeks, right?
I hope, but this is a twenty twenty-two, this is going to be a twenty twenty-two bill, so you're not going to see it until it's here.
All right.
Unfortunately.
Early twenty twenty-two?
Yes, yes.
That would be great, because we've suffered with one bar, or you had to walk out to the back of your lot to get a bar.
Right.
Sometimes it's zero, so it would be a great improvement to the downtown.
Well, as I said during the planning commission, if you have a problem, always complain, complain. Because when they can't decide where to build a site, they have three categories to consider. One is customer complaint, and the other one is their engineers' computer-generated development, and then the other one is drive-by testing. So when they receive customer complaints, that's an indication that they need to consider a site.
All right. Thank you. But there's also a tower that was supposed to go over the airport, is that going to be still in play, or is that?
I believe so, because when I contacted the RF engineer, he gave me, we'll give the city a little bit, there are four sites planning, and this is one, and then the other airport, and then there's another two sites.
Oh, great. That early nineteen twenty-two, or twenty twenty-two, that'd be great.
I can only talk with this one, but the L S three site, you know, is not my site, so.
Sure. Well, the one at the airport's been on, in the planning for years, we've been waiting.
Sorry.
If you could relay that back as a joint complaint of service, widely, so that would be appreciated.
All right, that would be, all right, enough.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. All right, with that, we have Jay read what we're trying to approve.
I'll make a motion.
All right, let's have a second.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, it's read by title only. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Scrivener?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Republican Court?
Yeah.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a four zero vote to approve the first reading and introduction of an ordinance amending the regulating plan and finding the ordinance to be exempted from the California Environmental Quality Act, adopting a resolution of the City Council approving conditional use permit number twenty twenty-one dash oh one, and architectural design and site plan review number twenty twenty-one oh one, AT&amp;T Mobility, subject to conditions of approval. I believe that eighteen, and that's actually number six.
We have two motions, one is to introduce the ordinance, and one is to adopt the resolution. You need to take those separately, and I think you moved to adopt the resolution, did you not?
I, the motion was to do what Jay had read in entirety, so let's just take it and it's in place.
Take the resolution first.
We will, if you would amend your motion to first, to approve the first reading and introduction.
Happily, I'll do just that, second.
Roll call vote on the amended.
Are we doing the ordinance first or the resolution?
We're going to, it's supposed to be, we're going to introduce the ordinance first, which is what the motion.
Introduction, yes.
Just now, and then we'll go to the resolution.
Correct. Councilmember Scrivener?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Republican Court?
Yeah.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a four zero vote to approve the first reading and introduction of an ordinance amending the regulating plan and finding the ordinance to be exempted from the California Environmental Quality Act.
In the next half, the motion will approve the resolution.
I'll make that.
Adopt the resolution.
Adopt the resolution.
I'll make that motion to adopt the resolution, second.
There's the motion, second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Scrivener?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Republican Court?
Yeah.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a four zero vote to adopt the resolution of the City Council approving conditional use permit number twenty twenty-one oh one, and architectural design and site plan review number twenty twenty-one oh one, AT&amp;T Mobility, subject to conditions of approval.
Thank you. All right, item number nine, Jay.
While I know you guys are dying to see another presentation, I don't have one for this item. Tonight, I ask you to introduce an ordinance of the City of Tachki amending various sections again of our zoning code, not only the ones affecting someone, to regulate accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. So starting in two thousand, it might have even started back in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, the California legislature began passing a series of bills amending the California Government Code that limited, that limited the standards cities may impose upon accessory dwelling units. These bills became law in January twenty twenty, and amended further in January twenty twenty-one. So first, let me start by saying, in case you don't know what an accessory dwelling unit is broadly, accessory dwelling unit is effectively just an additional dwelling unit that accompanies typically a single-family house, although it can also be multi-family development. So an apartment complex can have an accessory dwelling unit. So a junior accessory dwelling unit is a subset of accessory dwelling units that is a smaller version that typically doesn't have the complete suite amenities that you, you and I would agree is in a dwelling unit, is in a house, right? So what's typically in a house, even a small one, like a studio apartment, is a kitchen, a place to sleep, and a bathroom. A junior accessory, that accessory unit doesn't include all of those items. It includes a convenience kitchen and can have a shared bathroom with the main structure. So anyway, those are the two kind of categories. And so the state, as we know, has been actively working to increase housing stock within the state of California. And so some enterprising legislatures began passing laws and amending the government code because what they were finding is that cities had a number of different levels of permissibility for accessory dwelling units, right? Some cities were very permissive, we have always been more on the permissive side of that. Some agencies, particularly coastal cities, are very anti-accessory dwelling units because they just don't be, end up being rentals or short-term like Airbnb rentals, and, and so those cities had pushed against allowing those to occur. So the state started taking away the power from cities and other local agencies to stop them or to zone them out, and instead passed sweeping laws that basically said that if you have a residential zone, you have to allow accessory dwelling units. And they went further than that. They've also been limited the, some of the detailed standards of the construction of accessory dwelling units that might have prevented them from occurring. So examples, for instance, is we have setback requirements in our residential zones that say that a house has to be this many feet from the fence, this many feet from the next house on one side, this many feet on the other side. And so by doing that, you kind of shrink the building area a lot, and so cities would oftentimes have regulations in place that kept them, that kept accessory dwelling unit from becoming practical for those reasons. And so the state said none of those apply either. So in a lot of ways, and I'm not going to go into all the details, because in short, we are, we reached out the direction of the city attorney to Richard Swaterson and Dershon, legal counsel who assists us, and they assisted us in writing a regulation that we think is the best bid that we can apply for this issue for the City of Tachki, but I'll be frank with you, there were very few options that we had for how we could affect the state's laws and stay in compliance. And so the proposed amendments, we amended chapters three and four of the code, as well as chapter eleven, these sort of small amendments. Chapter three is our zoning tables, so we made notation changes in the tables, et cetera. Chapter eleven is definitions. Chapter six, though, we completely revoked, chapter six, twenty-one forty, which, that is the entire section specifically relating to accessory dwelling units. In short, I'm, I'm just going to sum it up this way, any A U or J A U under eight hundred and fifty square feet is permitted by right and requires only a building permit, and we cannot change that. So that means if somebody wishes to make an addition to their house, an addition to a separated garage, convert a garage into a dwelling unit, it's under eight hundred and fifty square feet, they must only comply with the California Building Code. The planning commission will not hear those issues. Staff has sixty days to process that application upon receipt, under state law, no questions asked. So our, this revised code complies with that requirement under state law. Above eight hundred and fifty square feet, we have some flexibility to apply objection, not objectionable, objective, thank you, objective standards to the, the rollout of, of these codes. So for instance, something the city did add for an A U greater than eight hundred and fifty square feet that might create a view of an otherwise private neighboring space they have to control against. So the example is somebody's got a garage in their backyard, and they're putting an A U as a second story on that garage, and now they're going to get a view of that A U of their neighbor's backyards. We, we require a certain level of screening to keep those views from occurring. So these are some of those objective, objective standards that we apply to that, but that's frankly the level of standard that we're allowed to apply. We can say no in those cases, we can only apply some standards to their rollout. Because once we restrict them down to eight hundred and fifty square feet, they fall back into the other category, and they're just a building code compliant. So it's been a little frustrating for us, the staff are probably hearing that from me, this is kind of, it's tough, but the way I characterize it, I did have a chance to speak to our state assembly member about the issue, is these one-size-fits-all laws from Sacramento are often difficult to internalize. You know, in some cities, this makes a lot of sense, this is actively, areas in L.A. County are exploding with A U construction. Because of the tight housing market, the really high housing prices, A Us kind of makes some sense, right? You get a lot more people, you do a lot more pieces of property this way, they're a lot denser. But for us, where we have housing production, you know, and, and people, you know, it's tough today, generally speaking, people who buy a home around here, it, it's a little tougher for us. But it is what it is, and we are presenting to you a compliant revisions to the zoning code. So there's my explanation. Happy to try to answer your questions about any details. I therefore recommend you introduce an ordinance of the City of Tachki amending various sections of the Tachki zoning code to regulate accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, and finding the ordinance to be exempted from the California Environmental Quality Act. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Jay. Anyone from the audience would you like to ask a question? Sounds like the state in its infinite wisdom, as usual, removes the local authority that we have and makes broad-brush decisions for the entire state, no matter where we live. Any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to be clear for, in a nutshell, you're saying this is not endorsing this or supporting this, it's merely making our, helping us to be compliant with what we must be compliant with and protecting what we have the discretion to protect.
Yes, that's exactly correct, and I'll take a step further. If we don't pass this or something like this, then the state's model ordinance becomes our law, which is even more flexible than this version. Like I said, in each of the cases where we felt like we could insert, insert objective standards to control against these, we did in a way that we felt like would best fit with the City of Tachki and who we are. And so if we don't do this, it's not like we, we win.
Sure. I just, I just wanted to distill that down to a soundbite so folks that are trying to try to understand, this is what we must do, and if we're doing this, we can.
And I've received four attachments since the beginning of twenty twenty-one for A Us, and, and we processed those according to the law, so anyway.
Thank you.
So as far as setbacks goes, if someone wants to add something to a house that's less than eight hundred and fifty square feet, they can go right up to the property line now, or the new rule is four feet, rear and side setback. So they can encourage from five feet to four feet?
Yes. Well, in, in certain zones, Mayor, five is not the limit. In, in single-family home neighborhoods, typically like T four, the number is, is seven on one side and ten on the other in order to get houses to kind of squeeze into lots a little bit and to give more side yard space. And so, but, so if you have a house that's at seven and ten, the A U can be four and four to the neighboring property lines.
All right. But the multi-story would have to have screening so they don't?
Only if it's over a backyard, only if it's over eight hundred and fifty square feet. If it's under eight fifty, there are no rules other than the building code. It must comply, of course, with the building code, it has to be safe, it has to be structurally sound, and have electricity and plumbing, and all those things have to be code, but, but I cannot apply the standard relating to screening to something under eight hundred and fifty square feet.
I'm not sure why that.
I wrestled, Tom is my witness, I wrestled for months with RWG, fighting them, like, what do you think, I can't do these things, and anyway, so that was, that, we were all in the same team, so.
But we're getting some of these micro homes, two-story, you know, you could get four hundred or three hundred and fifty feet on each story, and then you've got a view of your neighbor all of a sudden that you didn't have before. So I guess it's up to the, the neighbor to put screening up, the trees, and, yeah.
Still, we certainly hope the neighbors will still continue to choose to leave the neighbors to each other.
All right. With that, there's one more discussion. Do I have a motion? Item number nine, that's read.
I'll make a motion, second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Scrivener?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Republican Court?
Yeah.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a four zero vote to approve the first reading and introduction of an ordinance amending the regulating plan and finding the ordinance to be exempted from the California It was a four-zero vote to approve the first reading in the ordinance of the city council of the city of Tashpey amending various sections of the Tashpey zoning code to regulate accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units and finding the ordinance to be exempted from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you.
All right. Item number ten, Jay.
May I? Mayor, I'd like to recuse myself on item ten due to a vegetable for the hospital ed of amendments of caution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mayor Smith and councilmembers, my last item I have for you tonight is to adopt an ordinance of the city council of the city of Tashpey approving Plan Development Number 201901, Safe Ranch, subject to the conditions of approval.
I reintroduce to you, Mayor, our special counsel, Janetta.
Chupinco.
Chupinco, from Richard Floss, Senator Shaw.
Welcome. Thank you for being here.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Okay, I am not going to go back through the entire presentation from the last meeting. Yes, cheering is certainly allowed. Briefly, I'll just summarize what we talked about in the last meeting. Safe Ranch is a master land development request to construct nine hundred and ninety-five single and multifamily homes in a planned development zone. So the reason that you're hearing this again, a second meeting in a row, is because technically a planned development is a rezone. And just like you did with AT&amp;T, literally, the process is very, very synonymous between rezoning the school's property there for the AT&amp;T cell power and this project. So the council heard on August 16th the issue and a detailed report on the plan development, on the detailed environmental impact report that was provided, information on tentative tract seventy-three sixty-six, which is a tentative map associated with this project, as well as a detailed discussion of water issues associated with this project. At that time, you all certified the environmental impact report, and by adoption, by resolution, adopted tentative tract seventy-three sixty-six. You also introduced an ordinance to approve this plan development, and so tonight is the second reading and final adoption of that ordinance. We did receive one comment, we had one speaker, you will recall at the public hearing from August 16th, prompting one change to the conditions of approval associated with the proposed ordinance, and it's important for me to clarify exactly what we did. It was related to the timing and commitment of water rights dedication in the city to offset the demand created by the project. The applicant agreed in that meeting and prior to that meeting to supply up to one hundred and seventy-five acre feet of pumpable water rights. The EIR only requires ninety-three acre feet of pumpable water rights to mitigate the impacts of the water supply. The applicant voluntarily agreed to commit the additional pumpable rights to this project and agreed to this being a condition of approval. One comment received was question as whether or not that was enforceable, the upgrade from ninety-three to one seventy-five, because it wasn't written into the conditions of approval in detail. And so you all instructed us to make that modification, and we made that modification to condition of approval number fifty-three, which is included in your staff report and it's kind of legal needs, so much longer to discuss it, I wasn't going to read it. But that change is captured in that revised language. And so aside from that one comment, there were no other public comments received. And so staff recommends that you adopt an ordinance of the city council of the city of Tashpey approving Plan Development Number 201901, Safe Ranch, subject to the conditions of approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jay. Any comments from the public?
Would you have Gabby Martin?
Good evening.
Hi, Derek Lawrence and Lori Coleman. Yes, hi. So we are neighbors to this plant of development, and I was out of the country at the last meeting, so hence neither one of us was here at this time. And both of us and multiple neighbors in our neighborhood are very concerned about the amount of homes placed in a rather small area. We live in Heritage Oaks East, and that many years ago was approved by the council for a nicest development in town. That's how it's been marketed for the last twenty years. And some of our fears are now we're bringing micro homes, maybe not quite as micro as what you described earlier, into our neighborhood. So the density is really of a big concern to us. So a lot of homes, a lot of traffic, what is that going to do to the safety on our homes? And just to kind of touch on what you said, Mr. Schlosser, the pumpable water rates, the water was definitely a concern that, you know, seemed to have been addressed, and the number of houses, which was over a thousand for a small area, was brought down just because of the water rates, is my understanding? And so a question to you, Mr. Schlosser, when they agreed to increase the pumpable water rates, and you said, yes, it is enforceable, but over how many years are they going to do this? Two years, four years, ten years? Forever?
I can answer. Do you want to have her finish and give me all the questions I can answer? Or answer a question at a time, or it's up to you?
No, no.
You can go ahead and finish your question. You can go down the list, all right?
Yes, yes. And so obviously, the sewer, you know, you put another thousand homes into the city, what's going to happen to the sewer plan? And how's that going to affect me? How's that going to affect our neighborhood? How's that going to affect our taxes? Are now we going to pay more taxes, which are already astronomical, my book, you know, to increase this new community's water issues? And quite honestly, with this development being by all, everything that it looks like with the density and everything else, I cannot imagine the houses, it seems to, they still be on small lots, but some up to twenty-six hundred square feet on rather small lots, and then down to a very minute house. What is that going to do to property values in this community that, you know, you decided was going to be a good fit of where we're living now? So now we all of a sudden have these little homes, they're going to be, you know, what is it going to do to the property values? This is not just our concerns, but there's other neighbors. Unfortunately, I guess everybody thought somebody else's on the street, and so that's why we're here now.
And if I could have the opportunity to add to that, the development that was approved east or west of Curry and south or north of Highline, there are a lot of empty lots and empty areas in there that haven't been developed with homes yet. Why are we approving something new when we already have these existing lots that could be?
That already have infrastructure on them, you know? The streets are there, sewers there, electricity is there, and whatever else is already there. But why was the push by the city made to let's get this going before we start muddling in something else? Those, I think, are our concerns?
We'll be happy to address those.
Okay.
Right now.
Okay.
We're good.
Go ahead, Jay.
Thank you. First of all, if I can just say, thank you for pronouncing my name correctly, it's a rarity. Excellent.
I'm German.
Yeah. My dad would be proud. It took me years to get it right, so anyway. Okay, a number of questions there. I first like to point out that this actually started back in July at the planning commission. And if you were within three hundred feet of the property, you received a direct mailer from us noting where the public hearing is. Some people, you know, if you're just like one lot in, that would have missed you. So, but that's, we did do detailed advertising. We had a lot more comments like these at that first hearing. This was two hearings ago, the planning commission heard it, and there was a detailed presentation provided both at that meeting and at this one addressing these types of questions. So, and so you weren't alone, you weren't the only one that came. In fact, I had, two years ago, I had two folks from your neighborhood come visit me, and we talked about the project. And so you're not alone in terms of these comments being considered. So to answer them in the sequence that I wrote them down, small homes in proximity to your neighborhood was a big issue for us when they approached us back in 2018. And I don't have a depiction, because again, we're at the very last hearing, but I have this in previous ones. We asked the developer to position the largest homes and ones of highest value immediately adjacent to your neighborhood on the other side of Union and adjacent to the existing Clearview neighborhood on the west side of their property. And so, and the applicant agreed to readjust the entire alignment of the project. So the homes that are there are all the largest lots, all the homes will be between two thousand and twenty-five hundred square feet in size. They are smaller lots, but they are going to be higher-valued homes. So they may not be quite as nice. I do believe every joke's the nicest neighborhood in town. But we believe in so doing that, that we are making a major step in protecting your investment by making sure that the homes that are within the next several blocks of you all are all larger, single-family, not multifamily homes. So we did make that change years ago. As to the water rights issue on the project, they are bringing us, they're offering one hundred and seventy-five acre feet of water rights, which means by rights, that's a right to pump that amount of water out of the ground every year forever. So that one hundred and seventy-five acre feet the applicant is bringing us is forever water, it's that amount of water every single year. So that's why we felt comfortable, and I believe the council felt comfortable in the last meeting with approving the project, because this is a significant amount of water needed for the project in perpetuity, such that it will have no effect on the neighboring property owners. Let me get through it all, and then if the mayor would like you to let me speak.
It's just with the water, where exactly would that come from?
We pump all of our ground, all of our water here in the city is pumped out of the ground. So there is an offer underneath us that's adjudicated and regulated. There's about three hundred and fifty thousand acre feet of water in storage under the city of Tashpey now, and it is regulated by the Tashpey Cummings County Water District. We are a property owner and rights holder, and we have the right to pump that water out of the ground. And I would assert to you as an engineer, as the city engineer for eighteen years now, that very strongly say to you, the Tashpey water basin is very healthy despite, and it is, I go so far as to call it drought-proof. It is designed and managed such that it, that we are protected from these incidences. That's what good engineering is when it comes to groundwater management. So that's where the water's going to come from. The city owns a series of wells around town, then we pump the water out, store it in tanks, and then serve it to customers. On the sewer issue, this one's easy. Each new home will pay a series of fees to the city of Tashpey, one of which is a sewer connection fee. That is money that we gather and bank, and then we use that money every fifteen or twenty years to upgrade the sewer treatment plan to accommodate that growth so that existing rate payers are not paying that bill. And so every single new home in this development will pay sewer fee, water fee, water type one fee, traffic fee, there's seven of them.
Safety, fire?
Yeah.
Police.
Police, exactly, exactly. And so I can confidently tell you, there will be no impact on you from a sewer perspective. Lastly, the question regarding the Alto States development, which is one I also get, the answer is twofold. One is that project is potentially moving forward, although that's all I can say at this point, because it hasn't, it hasn't, it would go to the planning commission. In fact, we'll be, we expect to agendize a discussion of that project for the planning commission next Monday. But the more important answer is private property rights. Just because somebody else owns a piece of property over here that could be developed into something does not affect whether an individual who owns this piece of property over here has the right to apply for and seek approval to construct something on it. So the answer, the short answer is the developer of Safe Ranch project doesn't own those lots in Alto States, and so they, they're not looking to build those, they're looking to build on the property that they own. So, and here's what I would say to assuage your concerns, is the market fixes itself really well here in this country. When there are too many homes, home prices plummet, and so home builders stop building new homes. And when there aren't enough homes, the price has skyrocketed, which is what we're seeing right now, and home builders go, oh, there's profit to be made, and they get busy building homes. And this process self-adjusts itself. In non-California areas of the country, it's not so much of a swing. California's regulations, this is just my opinion now, California's regulations create this weird swinging market we get in housing, where you go from years of feast to years of famine. We literally have fifty new homes in the last ten years in the city of Tashpey. So we're kind of doing, in my opinion, as the development director for some additional homes. Whether we need all of this project and all of that project, I say the market solves that problem. So time will tell on that front. But hopefully I've answered each of your questions. I'd be happy to speak to you afterwards. And I can also give you my card if you'd like to come meet with me, and I can fill you in on the details of the project since you missed out on the previous presentations. So, but we did, we did think of you guys when we put this together.
Thank you for that.
All right. Thank you. Very good questions. I hope they're, you know, addressed and answered, especially when you're, we've done this in the past where we try to accommodate neighborhoods with similar-sized homes on, in the new homes going in. But like I said, we have had very little development over the years. And this project is going to be spanned over a number of years. It's not going to be an instant traffic and everything else. And they have to, all the homeowners that buy a house there, they have to pay traffic mitigation fees. I mean, wherever, like, a large business goes in, they may impact traffic over in another area of town where we have to put in a signal because those people are going to go to that business or whatever. Same is here. Everything, water, sewer, law enforcement, fire, traffic has to be addressed with an EIR, the environmental impact report, and was addressed thoroughly and especially with order. So very good questions, so I appreciate that. Is there anyone else who would like to ask a question? All right. Council? Councilmember Hovencourt, any questions?
No, thank you.
Yes. It was thoroughly covered, and we'd be happy to go through that with you one-on-one if you would like. Well, good night's with anyone. Do I have a motion then to adopt an ordinance of the city council of the city of Tashpey approving Plan Development Number 2029-01, Safe Ranch, subject to conditions of approval?
I'll make that motion that's presented.
Do I have a second?
All right.
Roll call, vote please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Hovencourt?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a three-run vote with a recusal from Councilmember Scrutner to adopt a reform of the city council of the city of Tashpey approving Plan Development Number 20. Twenty is this, 2029?
Well, that's right. There was a typo.
Vote on Safe Ranch, subject to conditions of approval.
So that is number 2021.
I think it's 2019.
2019, I'm sorry, yes. So that correction, okay. Thank you all, and good luck with the project and good luck with the neighbors. I hope it adds to your value, actually. You just beat me spread. All right. City managers report.
Great. Apologize for being able to make it tonight, but just off the, real quick, just a reminder that the farmer's market continues through the month of September, so looking to finish that strong here this month, and I'll be on Green Street every Thursday until seven PM, four to seven. And we've been approached and briefly kind of just spoken about it, but there is a redistricting process starting for the federal, state, and eventually local levels, we're not quite at the local level yet, we don't have census data. But it's been brought to our attention, there is some chatter about trying to move Tashpey out of the 23rd congressional district into the 25th, which would be northern LA County, which I think, no matter how you feel about your representative, would not probably go well for us in terms of having a voice. There's a move to get some of the East Kern County communities, Bridgecrest being one of them, kind of carved off out of that and put it in that district. So we're working with the Citizens Redistricting Commission. There is a hearing tomorrow, and if folks are interested in speaking on behalf of Tashpey, what's happening is there are people and most likely political folks that are being told, hey, if you pull this, you know, get this section of these current, they'll help our party get the seat. And so there's, that's, it really costs of us getting our representation that we have, and we have very good representation right now. So we're, there is a hearing tomorrow, Citizens Redistricting Commission. We have drafted a letter, and we're trying to participate in a hearing tomorrow as well to speak on behalf of Tashpey because other people apparently are. And so our hope is to keep East Kern together with Bridgecrest, Mojave, California City, Roseman, and not separate us from our Kern County. Roseman, and not separate us from our Kern County representatives on behalf of the federal and state level. So more to come on that, but there is a hearing tomorrow.
Is that all? So that's interesting. Councilmember reports? Member, Councilmember Pokenford, anything?
No, not that I can think of.
Thank you.
Susan?
No, everything's running well. I want to remind all of you about lawyer football this year, the theme is one town, one team. And I'm old, and I didn't think I'd have to business anymore, but I have a sixteen-year-old grandson who's proving to be a star, so Tashpey football's getting exciting. Thank you.
All right, we had a close session tonight, so thanks to you all for participating, and we'll see you in the next meeting. Thank you.